As we do with other public hearings, we afford the public a chance to speak in regards to the matter that is before our council this evening. I don't see that we're going to have anybody that will offer, but we will hold the public hearing. So with that, I will ask if anyone would wish to speak in regards to ordinance number 63-2020, the ordinance regarding the city of Greer, South Carolina, adopting the Greer Comprehensive Plan. I'll ask a second time if there is anybody that would like to speak in that regard, and a third and final time to allow you to speak by show of hand or by your presence at the podium. Would you like to speak in regards to ordinance number 63-2020 and ordinance of the city of Greer, South Carolina, adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan? Let the record indicate that no one chose to speak in public hearing in regards to the ordinance, and I'll call the public hearing to a close. Council, with that, we will call the meeting to order. This is our regularly scheduled council meeting called and convened to the evening of January 12th, 2021, as we start a new year. I thank you for joining us and being with us this evening and participating in our first meeting here of the new year. Having called the meeting to order, I'm going to ask Councilmember Judy Albert if she would to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for council.
(Inaudible) to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you have shared with us through 20, even though there were difficult times, dear Lord, we were still blessed in so many ways. We pray that you will be with us in '21 and that it will be a much better year for all. We pray that you will be with our country and the Torah model that it is in now, and we pray, dear Lord, always that thy will be done, in Jesus's name, amen.
Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Council, with that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive the minutes of the council meeting from December the 8th. Seems like a long time ago. You may want to refresh your memory about those minutes, but I'll entertain a motion that be received.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, the departmental reports are contained in your packets this evening. As always, the administrator would be glad to answer any questions in that regard, as will department heads. We do have a financial activity report, and Mr. Slyford joins us this evening for that.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the financial performance summary for the month ended November 2020. Beginning with the general fund, we have revenue of just over $4 million with operational expenditures of $10.8 million. At that level, the operational expenditures are 6% under budget. Taking into account the amount of year-to-date fund balance that we have spent on construction projects in the amount of just shy of $742,000 gives us total expenditures for the period into November 2020 of $11,560,000. Again, taking into the fund balance usage into expenditures, the total expenditures are 2% under budget. So again, operational 6% under budget, total expenditures 2% under budget. If you'll reference the dashboards that are provided, we have a combined positive variance on the benchmarks of $82,500. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue recorded of $1,490,000 and expenditures of $552,000. And in the stormwater fund, we have revenue of $112,000 and expenditures of $111,000. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Council?
Thank you, Governor. Hospitality taxes?
Yes, sir.
How are we tracking from not budget time, but year-to-date time as far as what we... Our revenue?
Right. Make sure I get the right page here. That is in one of the graphs in your summary report, under the hospitality taxes. It is the fifth page back, and it looks like this. And what this graph is showing is the blue line are the actual receipts, and the red line is budget. So the red line is flat going across, and the blue line is above budget from July 1 through the period of November 2020. Looking at December, that's the largest receipts we've had to date from December, and we'll be getting that report in two weeks. So the hospitality is continuing very strongly.
If you go back to January 1, '20 until December 31st, how did it track over the year or how?
January 20th or December 20th is split in fiscal years. So I haven't looked at it in analysis from that viewpoint. If you go to that next page, which is the... Is a three-year trending. You know, the real lows there are February, March, April, May, those areas. But then we bounced back in May and June.
It might have.
Yeah, so when you look at the annual report, when we get that, when we finish the financial statements that will be coming in the first quarter into March, year-to-date hospitality, if I remember correctly, was about 1% over budget. I don't have the June statements in front of me. So even though we dipped down, we recovered and came in above budget.
And again, the reason I like to track it, I think that's a leading indicator.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a good economic indicator for the community.
David, I want to thank you for taking the time last night to spend some time explaining budgeting and budgets and budget items to those folks that were participating in our meeting last night. Very informative and was able to... You were able to spend some time showing those folks many of the reports that you referenced tonight and how we can track that and how they can track that in an air of true transparency. And I think if nothing else, last night was a good way to help people not only better understand how their money is being used, but how they can see where it is being used and how it is being used. So thank you for taking the time last night.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. We did get two phone calls today. Kate shared with me. One participant that was here, one that was online, both called in, said, you know, thank you. And then the second comment was how refreshing it was to have a government that was so transparent.
Great.
I think that carried a good message last night, so I was glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. He explained municipal budgeting in its totality in about 30 minutes, so... He did a great job. We'll move to the administrators' report. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So the first thing I wanted to discuss was the Citizens Academy. We had our first meeting last night, and by way of reminder, just the Citizens Academy is a six-week course that takes citizens that have signed up for it through the behind-the-scenes of what's going on in local government. How does your local government work? It's... We do in-depth analysis, like we did last night, of council administration and finance. They'll do a deep dive of the fire department, deep dive of police, building and development services. It's a lot of why do you do the things that you do? And then when you go through a Citizens Academy-type class, oh, okay, there's a method to the madness. So we were excited to offer that last night. I know Kate has worked very hard on getting that going, and we had, I believe, nine in-person, 11 virtual participants. So in my experience and other jurisdictions, Citizens Academy has always been something that's been very positive and beneficial, offering to the citizens, and really is kind of vindicative of true participatory democracy, so you understand what it is that's going on, that Greer government isn't this faceless bureaucratic mob. It's really an entity full of people serving people. So again, we've got five more weeks, and I look forward to not only that further participation, but this program growing and we getting more buy-in from the citizens. The second thing I did want to mention tonight is on the 19th is our annual Martin Luther King meeting. Obviously, it's a little bit different. Did you want to mention anything about that, sir?
Yeah, I'm doing it this year by invitation, because we ain't going to pack no threat of people in here, so... No. We're doing it by invitation. We're not going to serve food or anything this year. They're going to condense it down and get them in and out within an hour. That's special for us to get them in and out in an hour. I promise. But Steve knows we're going to stream it too on our Facebook page, so it'll be something different this year.
Yeah, it'll be different. It's the 19th Annual.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, and it's being held Monday, January 18th. If you would, if you do would like to be here in person, please let Tammy know so we can RSVP you a spot, because we are limited in the number of physical spots, but of course it'll be available online. So we're looking forward to hosting that in a different format, and I look forward to next year getting back to the normal format. The other thing I wanted to mention is Greer Relief. There, we are getting along in... As time goes on, Greer Relief is needing more and more to expand their operations and are really kind of putting wheels to moving out of our downtown, but still being able to participate and serve the citizens that they help. So I wanted the next two items, this one and the next one, more kind of a bug in your ear type things that we really do need to start figuring out how we're going to assist them in not only vacating the property that we own downtown, but how we're going to assist them in getting relocated and rebuilt. So there's some things that staff is working through with not only just some internal issues, but working with Greer Relief staff. We're going to bring some recommendations and ideas to council, and then we can bat those things around. But as time progresses, we need to address the Greer Relief matter downtown. The second thing is the Greer Museum. Again, I'm not bringing you any definite right now, but to tell you that that is more and more becoming on the radar. I know that Leadership Greer, this year's class, is taking an interest in the museum and participating in some way of buoying the museum as a community asset. So as those things are taking place, our role as not only the landlord of the Greer Museum, but having a vested interest in the cultural heritage and history of Greer, we're going to have a... Some level of involvement in that. Again, staff is working through some things, and we're going to come to you with some recommendations sooner than later on how to handle the museum moving forward. And then finally, I know that Mrs. Albert, you had had some concerns this week about noise ordinance, and had some concerns about construction starting and stopping. We have... We batted that around pretty healthily yesterday in our leadership team meeting. I know that Chief Hamby and I have had a conversation about it. Ms. Helms and I have had a conversation about it. And I'm not coming to you with a recommendation for an ordinance change at this time. I would like to take possibly a little more of a... More of a community approach and working with the builders themselves and addressing some of the concerns that some individuals have in neighborhoods without bringing the heavy hand of government down on an ordinance or policy yet. That's not off the table, but I think that's the approach we recommend taking at this time. I bring that up today to really just begin the dialogue with you, and I know you've had some real specific concerns and want to get a little bit of guidance from not only you, but from the rest of council on how you'd like us to proceed.
Right. Well, I received a couple, about three calls now from the same party regarding Suddath Farms, and their construction has been starting before 6 o'clock. Somebody's been out there. One time, it was 5:00 in the morning. They came and they were... I don't know what they were doing, but whatever they were doing, they needed light, which you would think in construction, you may need a little bit of light. So the light that they put up was shining right in this family's house, which I'm sure they did not do that on purpose. They were putting the light there to see what their project was, to see how they could do that. But of course, it woke her, her kids, everybody up, 5:00 in the morning. Then she called me Friday morning, and they had started at 4:15 a.m., which is very, very unacceptable. Now, this is in a large subdivision, Suddath Farms. I was thinking they were up to 700 homes or something like that, but somebody keeps saying 500. So anyway, 500, 700, that's a lot of construction. She told me that... I asked her how many homes were completed out there now, and she said just roughly guessing she would say maybe 100. So I don't really know how many is complete. But in light of that, and they've got 400 or more houses to go, and of course, when her kids are woke up and the other... She says all the neighborhood. I mean, all the people in the neighborhood have complained about it. But I did ask Chief Hamby to pull the reports for me, and he had several different reports relating to proactivity, theft, automobile accidents, things like that out in Suddath Farm. But he said according to their records, they only had like three reports. So I don't know. Now, she's saying that they have been out there multiple times. Maybe their multiple times were counted into the proactivity. You know, I don't really know. He did kind of ask him what proactivity covered, and Chief Hamby did send me an email back letting me know basically, you know, a lot of miscellaneous things. So what words were that maybe threw it into proactivity or whatever? I have no idea. But I know that the residents out there in that neighborhood are not happy at all. I did call D.R. Horton, and I left a message for what listed as, you know, one of the managers over... They're off of Verde, somewhere in Greenville. And I left a message for him, but that was like over New Year's weekend, and so I didn't receive a call. But then that Monday, one of the representatives there, she called me and said she would pass the message on. And then later that day or the next day, I received a call from one of the superintendents, I guess, and he said he felt like he knew who it was, that it was someone that was pouring cement over at the townhomes. But when she called me back... I called her and told her, you know, what he had said. I called the resident back. And then when she called me Friday morning, I asked her if it was down at the townhouses, and she said no. She said it's somewhere between Yellow Fox, I think it was the name of the road, and Prosperity or something other road. I'm not sure Prosperity was it, but it was something like that. So... But other than that, she didn't know. But 4:15 in the morning, to have someone hammering, doing all kinds of noise, you know, in a neighborhood that isn't even a fourth of a way finished? I think there's something, you know, that really needs to be done to address these issues. I've had tried to Google and find out the ordinance that Greenville City has, just to see, because when she called me, she had related that whoever her agent was had told her that they did have... That the city of Greenville had an ordinance for times, and she didn't see any reason why the Greer City wouldn't have any times. And we do have a noise ordinance, but several people have told me that it's very... Doesn't say a whole lot. It's kind of up in the air, up in the, you know, whatever you want to make of it, depending on what the circumstances is. And then they say they have to have something to check the velocity or something, the volume of the sound, or something, you know, of that nature. But, you know, I did try to find it, the ordinance for Greenville City, and so I asked Rick how he... How I might find it. And so he, you know, told me where I might find it and sent it to me and all that. But they have their set up between the hours of 7:00, 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. for construction. They do have provisions in there that if you want a permit, like maybe something drastic's happening and you need special hours, maybe you do need to go out before 7:00, or you need to go out after 9:00, that they, you know, get a permit to do that. Now, I know a lot of things happen in those hours that are acts that you're just not expecting to have, so as far as getting a permit to go out there, that might be rather difficult at times. So I realize all that, and I realize that weather affects construction a whole lot. And I know that a lot of times in the summer, they want to get out there and start working before it gets exceedingly hot in the afternoon. I know when they're expecting rain, they want to get out there, or snow, sleet, hail, whatever. They want to go out there and get things done that they can do to protect what's already in place. So I realize all that, but I do realize that we're talking about people, and people are very important. They buy these houses to live in Greer, to enjoy it, and here they are, got 400 more, 500, 600 more houses to complete. I don't know, and being woke up at 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 in the morning. And I think that's a little bit beyond any consideration of anyone. So, you know, I definitely feel like we need to make some kind of move on getting something done for these people. And we do have another big subdivision, as you're all aware, that's going to be going up in the Blue Ridge area, and I think it was up off Gat Creek Road, maybe near Greer High School or something, that was going to have about that many homes going in it too. So I'm sure as people move in, that they're probably going to have the same issues. But as far as... And I called Mr. the representative from D.R. Horton back and let him know that this time, Friday morning, it was at 4:15 in the morning, but I haven't heard back from him since then. But I have to... I do have concerns for my constituents out there.
That's probably concrete folks. That's the only folks that have to start...
I'm sorry, Jay. I can't understand you.
It's probably concrete, people pouring concrete, and that's a function of weather or it's a function of what the plant can have, you know, how busy they are and how many yards the plant's going to be able to get out there.
Yeah, I'm sure. But he said, the guy from D.R. Horton said he felt like that's who it was. He said he felt like he knew who it was.
Yeah.
But when she called me back that Friday morning about the 4:00, I asked her if it was at the townhomes, and she said no.
Well, it probably was... I would, if I had to bet, I would say it is concrete, because they bring in the lights. That's the only way they can work.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We started at 4:00.
Well, that one probably would be one that could do with a special permit.
Yeah.
If they got to do it that early.
But the problem is they'll all pull a special permit, and so...
They what?
They will all pull a special permit so they can... Especially in summertime, because that's when they really get going, because they have to get out.
Yeah, but usually, even in the summertime, we don't have that much light that you can go out there and actually do a whole lot of construction unless you're drinking up lights.
That's why they bring in horrible lights.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. But that's not helping the residents that live there with their peaceful night of sleep and their kids that don't want to go to school the next day, you too, being interrupted their sleep. Of course, the kids may not want to go to school anyway, but that's a good excuse. So...
Staff will continue to look at this matter. Again, it's, you know, don't... We don't want to do surgery with a hatchet and create more problems than we solve, but we recognize that this is an issue, so we will take direction from council on this particular matter if we do need to look at our ordinance wholesale and beef it up, if we need to potentially address working hours based on seasons, based on time, based on discipline, whatever. We just... I think this needs to be a dialogue we need to have, and we need some guidance from you on how we need to proceed on this particular matter.
Well, I would like to speak...
I think it's a legitimate issue. I think it's worth taking a look at. I've talked with Ms. Albert on a couple occasions about it. I've looked at several ordinances, different ordinances, and I really like this idea of either times that are established that you work between or times that are established that you shouldn't work in, one or the other. And I've seen both of those. I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that, to Jay's point, there are, you know, there are construction issues that have to be addressed early or and/or later, depending on, you know, any number of different things. But I think that we have some reasonable expectation that we ought to have a period of time that we shouldn't be subject or subjected to... Subjected to something like somebody pouring concrete at 4:00 in the morning, not on a regular basis. I mean, we need to...
Fortunately, that subdivision won't go home.
And I get that. But still, even, you know, I explained to Ms. Albert, you know, one of the things that happens repeatedly during the summer, even in my neighborhood, which is established, is weekend work. More often than not, on a Saturday morning, somebody's going to be roofing a house at, you know, 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock out there, re-roofing a house out there. And so I think there is some degree of appropriateness about when work ought to take place. And to Ms. Albert's point, we all understand that if there is some sort of natural disaster or if you need to bring a crane in while the streets are closed and do something late at night, there needs to be exceptions to the rule. But for the most part, I think that, you know, that we ought to be able to at least have some guidelines about what's appropriate and what's not.
I agree, but if it's one of these opening up a can of worms, is it a noise ordinance? Or is it a... Because if it's a noise ordinance...
No, I don't think it's a noise ordinance, because you can't really... You can't enforce that. I think it's a time limitation.
Yeah, and that would honestly be staff's recommendation, because if we go down that road, we're going to look at times. The ordinance itself is virtually unenforceable, and I don't like to be so pessimistic and say it's virtually unenforceable, but the amount of evidence that would be required and the amount of staff time it would take to take the decibelometer, or whatever that thing is called, and wait and have a sustained period of noise for a sustained period of time, it becomes an issue from a legal standpoint of just... It's just such an objective criteria.
So your neighbor's out there at 6:30 on Saturday morning with his leaf blower, you're going to call the police?
I'll just call him.
Well, and I think there's also... There's a level of where it happens. There's a residential... There's a residential application, and there's a commercial application. If they're going to do some expansion at the Elland Port, largely, I mean, work, get it done, knock it out. Same goes for our parking deck here. You know, there's... I don't know that, you know, where we enforce it and how enforce it could be dependent on who would be aggrieved by it. So again, my personal opinion, and I think what I hear from staff, is that what I would like to bring to you, if you're so inclined, is at least a debate, to have something to debate, is an hour time and possibly a location. So for instance, industrial zone areas or something, there's no limitation, but residential, we could possibly look at that.
And I know that it would make it easier when the police are called out there, you know, because they're called out there for noise. They have no... They tell the people, you know, there's nothing they can do, I mean, you know, about that. So it is situations that the police are called out there for nothing, you know, really. And I know you mentioned that you had ridden by there before, excuse me, and were extremely surprised when you saw them out there serve working. I believe that was in your email.
It was, yeah. I mean, it was. I was a little surprised.
I think it's worthy of discussion.
Okay. Well, we'll take a look at it and bring something to you for your consideration soon. So...
This is going to include, like you say, leaf blower kind of residential thing.
No, I think that is... There's a reasonableness factor we need to look at, and if we're... A leaf blower, to me, doesn't rise a level of heavy equipment. Heavy equipment is heavy equipment. It's kind of you know it when you see it. So I think this needs to be really just applied to not John and Jane Q., homeowner who's doing routine maintenance on their home. This is specific to heavy construction.
Well, one of my neighbors was doing grass cutting even as I left to come here. So, you know, it happens all the time. It's not necessarily decency.
Right, right. That's why I think you leave the...
It's not right.
Well, I think the important thing for us is at least we could, amongst us, we could debate all kinds of whatevs. I want to give you guys something to send your teeth into and tear apart, debate. So with that, I think we've got... your teeth into and tear apart, debate. So with that, I think we've got some consensus on our march. And then with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Let's move to the first item this evening, which is appointments to boards and commissions. The Recreation Association Board of Trustees has an opening in District Five. Mr. Bettis, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir. I have two prospects, but no commitment yet.
Thank you, sir. We'll continue to, um, leave that open at this point then, and we'll move to items of old business. We have two this evening, uh, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-three dash twenty twenty. This is an ordinance of the city of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan, consistent with requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of nineteen ninety-four. Mr. McMahon, uh, joins us this evening for, um, our second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-three dash twenty twenty.
Yes, sir. Mayor, we would just like to let y'all know that we did hear some of the comments that you made at the first reading. We have relayed that message, those comments, to the UDO consultants. They plan to be on site for the next meeting to do a workshop, kind of a kickoff to the UDO on the twenty-sixth. That's really all the information they have at this time.
All right. Any questions in regards to, um, that activity or, um, planning effort of Mr. McMahon? If not, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to receive the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-three dash twenty twenty.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Floor's open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the, uh, second item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-six twenty twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Global Commerce Park, LLC, located on Brockman-McClyman Road from S-one to I-one. Any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number sixty-six dash twenty twenty?
No, sir. None at this time.
Um, you've heard that there's no new or additional information in regards to the second reading of ordinance number sixty-six dash twenty twenty. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Um, we don't anticipate action on, uh, this particular matter. Counsel will stay in chambers, and we'll ask, um, the audience to leave if they would, please. We will, uh, recall you before we reconvene. Counsel, an executive session. We've considered a personnel matter pursuant to State Statute Section thirty dash four dash seventy A-one. We've taken no action in that regard. I'll entertain a motion. We come out of executive session.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Um, we don't anticipate action on, uh, this particular matter. Counsel will stay in chambers, and we'll ask, um, the audience to leave if they would, please. We will, uh, recall you before we reconvene. Counsel, an executive session. We've considered a personnel matter pursuant to State Statute Section thirty dash four dash seventy A-one. We've taken no action in that regard. I'll entertain a motion. We come out of executive session.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.